Good evening, and thank you to MATV. This is the Select Board meeting on Wednesday, January 19th, 2022. This is a meeting that's being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. My name is Katie Conlon. I'm the Chair of the Select Board. Could we all introduce ourselves, please, the members of the board?
Alvin Doyle, Vice Chair.
Mike Zulis, Secretary.
Melinda Collins, Member.
And we'll keep an eye on the attendee list in case our fifth member, Richard Wells, should join us. This is just a short meeting this evening to cover a few time-sensitive items and add it. We had also added a couple of items that we initially discussed last week at our meeting, our regular meeting on the 12th. So the first item is a discussion regarding potential approval regarding the special town meeting on February 28th, 2022. Last week, the town moderator, Bob Piss, had come into our meeting and requested that we consider, his initial request was going to be that we hold the town meeting remotely. We then found out through town council that legislative authorization to hold a remote town meeting had expired in December, even though boards and committees such as our board are able to meet remotely until April, April 1st. So the question was whether there would be any legislation that might extend that deadline and allow town meetings for the winter and the spring season for all communities to be able to meet remotely. We've gotten an update on the legislative process. We also have wanted to watch the planning board meeting, and I see that the Chair of the Planning Board, Denny Swenson, is with us this evening. We wanted to watch the planning board meeting, get an update from them on what the the next steps would be, knowing that they were going to be talking about scheduling a public meeting. So the the update for the board is that Mr. Denny, he, the next day, we showed to all three of our legislators, Senator Timmeltie, Representative Driscoll, and Representative Luca Oakley, and we, the legislative process has started. We've also been in touch with the Mass Municipal Association, and this is a priority for them. We've learned from a couple of sources, including Representative Driscoll late this afternoon, that the House today passed a bill which is now on its way to the Senate that would extend the legislation authorizing town meetings to be held remotely through July. So that's the House version. We'll now need to see what happens in the Senate. And we're following up on that, and we're going to be checking and watching that as it progresses. The planning board and Chair Swenson can speak to this, but I was just going to report out to our board that the planning board scheduled a public hearing on February 8th on the accessory dwelling unit article, which would be after the initial deadline to go to for the warrant to go to print if we were to have the town meeting on February 28th. The moderator spoke with the Chair of the Warrant Committee to find out whether having a meeting in the middle of March, as we discussed last week, would be an undue burden on the Warrant Committee, given their budget deliberations this time of the year, and was told by the Chair of the Warrant Committee that they could manage having a special town meeting on March 14th and 16th, which are the dates that we were potentially looking at. The high school auditorium is available on March 14th and March 16th, but we're hoping now that we might be able to have a town meeting virtually rather than in person. So those are the updates, and Mr. Doyle and Mr. Denny and I spoke with town council and the town clerk this afternoon, and I conferred by email with the moderator. And the consensus among our group was that we should postpone the town meeting until March 14th, and we're going to recommend that to our board this evening. So that's our recommendation. Mr. Wells had asked last week if we come back with a recommendation, and that was the recommendation of Mr. Doyle, the town administrator, the moderator, and the town clerk was fine with March 14th. The town clerk did raise an interesting point, and it's not really on our agenda, but I'll just mention it to the board for further consideration. The clerk indicated that we may want to consider, if we move the special town meeting into the middle of March, which is during the height of the election season, to consider the possibility of postponing the annual town meeting for a short period of time. She did note that five precincts, because of the reprecincting, will be all town meeting members running for reelection. She's concerned if there may be vacancies, and she has to have precinct caucuses, that there be a fair amount of time that that might take. So she she just put that out as an idea that her, the town clerk's office would be able to handle it either way if we have a special meeting in March plus the annual on May 2nd, but that there is, she believes, a statutory authorization to, for the Select Board to move the town, the annual town meeting back a little bit. So that might be something we want to consider on our next agenda, and it's really not on the agenda for this evening, but she brought it up in the course of talking about moving the special town meeting. So so I think that's really a combination of all of the subsections, except for D, which is substituting the memory care zoning article. We can get to that in a few minutes, but for the for the update on the date and the potential March dates, and since Chair Swenson is here for the planning board, I'll ask if she would like to add anything regarding the accessory dwelling units.
Um, it doesn't really affect the timing issue, but the Warrant Committee voted unanimously last night to have their recommendation be to send it back to the planning board. That vote was taken at the Warrant Committee meeting last night, but that doesn't change the timetable yet because we still have our public hearing scheduled for February 8th. So I I don't know that that would change necessarily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Swenson. So do any of our members, would anyone like to speak to this issue of potentially moving the date of the special town meeting, which would allow for more time for printing in addition to the legislative process and the planning board process playing out? Mr. Doyle.
Madam Chair, to open for discussion, I'll move to change the date of the special town meeting, originally scheduled for February 28th, 2022, to March 14th, 2022, and or March 16th, 2022. The special town meeting may take place remotely or at Milton High School.
And I think we need, we need a date certain, so I think it should be March 14th. The follow-up night would be March 16th, would be March 16th, if we go.
That's correct.
Yes, okay. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Zulus.
Well, I was.
You look like you're about to speak.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking in real time here, and probably not best to open my mouth while I'm thinking in real time, but I'll do it anyway. So so it, it, by all appearances, from what we've heard, it seems like the the legislation will be extended, so we'll be able to do a remote town meeting if the House passed it. If it's going to go to the Senate next week, presumably that will pass prior to the 28th. So then I guess the, is it, is it fair to 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 think that the only real issue then is, is whether we extend the time from February 28th to to March 14th in order to have a better opportunity to hear the planning board articles, to give more time to the planning board articles? Is that, is that the analysis?
Well, I think since we're not certain when the Senate might act, and when, if there are differences in the Senate bill, if there's a conference process, whether that would all play out in time for us to go to print, the warrant would need to include the request from the moderator that we would meet remotely. So it's really, I think, I think the planning board article, yes, is first and foremost now, but the secondary issue still is getting the warrant to print with all the remote request language in it. Any other discussion on the motion? Ms. Collins.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. So I, my, my follow-up question then is by when, I mean, if we, if we vote either way to have it in person or remote, by when do we need to change that if if things don't pan out?
The warrant, so the warrant deadline for printing would, getting the draft of the print, it would be pushed back a couple of weeks. So if the town meeting were March 14th, we'd have to have the warrants into the homes by February 28th. So we're really looking at the middle of February is the date to have the warrant in good shape and at the printer for the proof and process, and then the the printing and delivery process. So we, we kind of mapped out a little bit that if we, if the, if the planning board hearing is February 8th, which is a Tuesday, our next meeting after the 26th would be February 9th. The Warrant Committee would have the option to meet. No, they did take a vote last night, so that I think the question would be, would they meet again if there, if any changes come out of the planning board's public hearing process? Would they meet again on the 9th or 10th? George Asher indicated they might meet on the 10th if necessary, but that was prior to their vote last evening. So there's be a few day, a window of a few days, we'd probably be looking at around Monday, the 14th of February, or Tuesday, the 15th, trying to get the warrant draft to the printer for the first proof. Mr. Zulus.
This may be apropos of nothing, but if, if, if we went ahead on the 28th and the the article referred back, that would presumably give the planning, well, I don't know. I was just going to say it would give the planning board more time between February and May if it were to come back in May, but May, perhaps it wouldn't come back until October anyway. So I was just thinking if it were in February, we'd have more, they'd have more time between February and May. If it's in March, they'd have less time, really, you know, just a really very short time if it's referred back. But if it, if the referral back will mean it won't come back until October, that's all, that's all a moot point. So so I guess the question is, if we're, if it were referred back, would it come back in May, do we think? And if so, should that have any, any impact on our decision to to have this meeting in, in the February or middle of March?
Well, the warrant for the May town meeting has closed, as we know, so there, you know, there is the issue of comedy among boards, and we wanted, if another elected board wants to would say, in this case, as an example, withdraw the article from the February, March town meeting and move it to the annual town meeting, you know, in the past, it's not too late in the process. The Select Board's usually pretty open to doing that. The citizens petition is on the warrant for the May town meeting. It's possible, you know, we don't know what could happen on the February 8th public hearing. We could be that there are changes from that public hearing that maybe there's a, maybe there's a grand compromise after that, and the Warrant Committee takes another vote. We'll, we'll see. Or or maybe the, the majority in the planning board decides to plow ahead and make the case to town meeting and notwithstanding the unanimous vote of the Warrant Committee. So, so I think there's too many ifs right now. For real, well, but it's, yeah, we're, we're thinking it through in real time, as you said. Any other comments? Mr. Denny, did you have anything to add on this topic, especially relating to the preparation of the warrant?
Uh, no, Madam Chair. The only thing I would say is I would I would, I would rather not put pressure on schools if they start, I know that they have a pretty busy schedule, and when I told them there were certain dates that were already unavailable, I'd prefer to secure those two dates as quickly as possible.
Right. Do we have any other discussion? And if not, we have a motion that's, Ms. Collins.
I'm sorry. I, I, I think, would, did the motion say would either be remote or in person? Does it have, do we need to choose one? We don't? Okay.
No, I, I think we can wait and see how the legislation proceeds, and the motion included both remote or in person.
And that was, Melinda, to allow for flexibility so that our bases are covered.
Well, if we have no other discussion, then I'll be ready for vote on the motion. All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. So we've now moved the town meeting from February 28th to March 14th, and we'll let all the parties, including the Warrant Committee, know. Also under item two was to substitute the planning board's article for memory care zoning, and this just is something we did not do a few weeks ago when the new version came in. So there's been no changes since. I'm not sure what the date of the meeting was. But this is, the, the article that's before is the one that the, the final version that the planning board has submitted. So we just need to vote officially to substitute. We had already agreed we were going to do that. It's really just a formality.
Um, well, Madam Chair, I moved substitute the amended special town meeting article relative to memory zoning care prepared by the planning board.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion, Mr. Zulus?
Just a question. Do we need to reopen the warrant for that substitution, or can we just substitute?
I think we can just substitute. We had, it's really more of a formality because we said we were going to do this, so I the Warrant Committee has already had this before. They've has already taken a vote on it.
Okay.
All right. All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we're onto item three, which is the annual town meeting. So we have, so it's on our agenda as May 2nd. We'll, we'll revisit that issue of that date at a future meeting. But we have a citizens petition submitted regarding accessory dwelling units, temporary apartment by law. The issue here is we've already included in the warrant. We voted last week to include the citizens article in the warrant, and it's on our agenda to submit the article officially. I think the planning board already has it, but to submit it through official channels and official vote of the board to the planning board so that they can review it and hold a public hearing and make any recommendations that they would like. Would anyone like to buffer a motion?
I'll move to submit to, of the, submit the citizens position petition regarding accessory dwelling units, the accessory dwelling units by law to the planning board for further review.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
I have a question. Sorry, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, I, 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 I just realized it's not you. So the, the emails going back and forth on this petition call it the temporary apartment. And since we have, since we have our planning board chair here, could you just clarify why it's called that in the, you know, the petition and the emails, and then now we're calling it the accessory dwelling units? Thank you.
I was going to ask the same question. We've been calling it the temporary apartment bylaw amendments. So I was, I, I didn't, I don't know. I, when I see accessory dwelling units by law, I'm thinking of the other one that we're having the February 8th hearing. So
Right.
For consistency, I would call it the temporary apartment bylaw amendments. That's what we've been calling it.
Okay, thank you. And I think we saw an email from Mr. Prondak today, and it seems as if this might be actually something slightly different. And if you read through, so I, I, so I, I don't, I don't know. I have to read through and compare, you know, the ADU that you've been working on. So, so, oh, okay, I, I don't, I just wanted to make sure I understood what was happening. Thank you.
It's, it's on our agenda, it's in accessory dwelling units by law, but also the citizens petition, because I think, you know, it's all gone out of the same discussion relating to accessory dwelling units at the planning board. So so they may, I have, I haven't gone through to see what the differences are, but they, I think they all relate generally to the same topic, even if it's, there are differences. So it's, it's, it's basically, it's the citizens petition itself. We, our title for it might not be complete, it might be to be changed, but.
Yeah, because it doesn't say accessory dwelling unit. It says temporary.
Temporary apartment.
And.
So it's the, it's the temporary apartment by law that already exists in our town, and the citizens have proposed amendments to that.
Yeah.
So it's not a brand-new bylaw. It's brand-new amendments to a bylaw that already exists, and it's temporary apartment by law. I know it's getting confusing.
I, I think it all fits under 3A because it's the citizens petition, so it all grows on the same topic. So temporary apartment, accessory dwelling units, I know there are differences, but there are, there are some, there are similarities too, and they all grow out of the same effort to do something about the existing bylaw. All right. Is there anything further before we vote? Let's start the vote over again. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins? You're on mute, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Thank you, and myself, yes. Okay, so that is now submitted to the planning board for review.
Yeah.
Item four is the Finance Committee's report on the American Rescue Plan Act. And Danny, you're, feel free to join us if you'd like, and if.
That's okay. You can put me back to attendees.
Thanks for coming in, and we wish you a good night.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.
So go to the Finance Committee, Mr. Zulus.
Well, I, I, I believe I addressed both of these, both of these recommendations last Wednesday, although my level of coherence may not have been quite what it should have been, but the first one, first recommendation from the Finance Committee was to ratify the payment of $800,000, $85,000 from the eligible Norfolk County ARPA allocation for the. from the eligible Norfolk County ARPA allocation for the January 9, 2022 COVID testing that took place. That funding was was needed in order to have that testing go forward. This board had not met, and so the the Finance Committee recommended it prior to it happening, and the request is that this board ratify that. I believe the number actually came up somewhat short of eighty, a bit short of $85,000, and maybe Mr. Dennehy can fill that in. And so the 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 request may be to to ratify something short of the $85,000 recommendation. But Mike, why don't you fill that in?
Oh, very, very spot on, Mike. You hadn't faded out that quickly at that time.
Not like last week.
So first and foremost, I want to thank this board for for ratifying that. We we had a inclination that we were going to go over the the allotted amount. We we do not, to remember Secretary Zulus's point, we do not need the full $85,000. At the current time, we need $67,195. That would make transformative care whole. We would have a zero balance. This board should give itself a round of applause. You successfully administered just shy of 12,000 tests, COVID tests, at at the various dates in which we we perform that. So that would give us a clean slate. Again, I talked about catching our breath. We could reconvene and talk about future dates and the funding of that. But at this point in time, $67,195 would bring us whole with transformative care for COVID testing.
$67,195.
That's correct.
All right, do we want to vote that one first, and then we'll go on to the second item? Do we have a motion?
So I'll move to allocate $67,195,000 from the eligible Norfolk County ARPA allocation for the payment of COVID testing on January 9th, 2022.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing done, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. For A2 is a $5,000 request for the town employee tests, 500 COVID tests to be used by town employees. And you did present this at our last meeting, Mr. Zulus.
I I believe I did. I don't know that I remember, but I believe I did.
You did, so I think we were on.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, we did get some updated pricing. Chairman Officer Mike Kelly got a quote from TransMed USA, which is a company out of Tingsborough. We had mentioned 9.95 per unit. It's nine nine, it's 9.25, so 500 test kits at 9.25 would be $4,625.
We might as well save every penny here, so. Okay, so the new amount is $4,625. Do we have any discussion on this, or would anyone like to offer a motion?
I'll move.
Go ahead, Mike. Nope.
I'll move to allocate $4,625,000 from the town's direct ARPA allocation for the purchase of 500 antigen tests to be used for town employees.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you. It should be, I know the Finance Committee is meeting on Friday morning, and you're going to be taking up more ARPA requests at that time. Are you going to be discussing potential for any additional COVID testing on Friday? But I think that's something that would make sense for the Finance Committee to take a look at, given where we are in the COVID surge. I know the numbers are wastewater numbers, the news reports indicate the numbers starting to decline. So it would seem that this, it seemed to me that this might still be the time to have some testing, whereas three weeks from now, we might be in a very different spot, unless a new variant or some other crisis emerges.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that on Friday. I believe, I believe we have room on our agenda under the ARPA funding. We typically have an other, so to the extent that we, to the extent that we, if we can take a look at that.
Okay. Okay, if there's nothing else on the finance report, then we will go on to item five. Town council asked us to put this on the agenda as we discussed at our meeting last week with the animal shelter advisory committee's project manager. The bids were well over what the funds that have been raised would cover and what the estimates were. So we have a 30-day window to act on those bids that came in at the end of December. So we need to act on it before the end of January. Town Council's advice was to put this on the agenda this evening so we could reject the bids, both the general contractor bids and the subcontractor bids. To follow up on the discussion last week, Ms. Collins and I did have a strategy session, for lack of a better term, with Mr. Dennehy, Marion McCadrick was the counsel for the Milton Animal League, the town planner, the town council. There may have been other, I think that Mr. Hogan came in late, he had another meeting at the same time, but he joined us late. And there may have been others there. I don't recall Mr. Dennehy if there was. But the, what came out of that was a discussion really of, you know, where do we go from here and what the next steps are. So both Attorney, Attorney McCadrick and Town Council will be meeting with the architect by telephone. This is going to be, you know, the COVID world, it's not really immediate, it's telephone conference, but, or Zoom. But they will be discussing with the architect the possibility of redesigning this project, as we discussed last week, to see whether the size of it could be reduced to help eliminate some of the cost and reduce the cost. Question is, if, because of all the ledge theory, how much of the bids and the additional cost above what we anticipated is attributable to the challenges with the site versus just the cost of materials rising in the current state of the construction world? So they're hoping to get some more information. I think that call will take place tomorrow. They've been trying to set it up, and we should have some more information regarding what the next steps are, how quickly we can redesign a project, what kind of cost savings there may be. There's, there's three or four questions that they'll be going over with the architect. So that's really critical to get that information and see what the architect recommends. So I, obviously, the goal of everyone is to try to move forward as quickly as possible here and come up with an alternative. But we do need to act on these bids, and we're well over $2 million short in terms of funding for. So there's, that's really the only alternative in terms of the bids, given the short window we're in. So I think the motion would be to reject all general contractor and subcontractor bids that were submitted in response to the request for proposals for the animal shelter construction. Mr. Doyle, you're on mute.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, we'll, we'll take that as motion, so I've made the motion. Okay, Mr. Doyle, seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Dennehy, anything you wanted to add?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, then if no discussion, I I do see Marion McCadrick in the attendee group. She called me right before the meeting and told me that she would be listening into our discussion. If anyone has a question or comment, we could move her up to panelist. I'm not sure that that we do, but that is the next step, is for her and for Kevin Freitag to talk with the architect. So is there anything, any questions that members of the board have or comments that we'd like counsel for the Animal League to join us for? All right, seeing none, so I think we're ready to go to a vote, then. The motion has been made and seconded. Do we have any, no further discussion? I'll go to about Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, so we rejected the bids, and we'll be putting this back on future agendas for next steps, and hopefully we'll be able to come up with a solution here that works for everyone involved. We've got a lot of volunteers and people who care an awful lot about the shelter who really want to see this move forward, and it's been a long process, so we hope that there'll be a positive solution. All right, if there's nothing else, then that's the last item on our agenda, and we can adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some movement, Madam Chair?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And Ms. Conlon, yes. All right, thank you, everyone. See you tomorrow for the joint meeting with the Board of Appeals, and then our regular meeting is next Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM. And we're still working on that agenda. Everyone has the draft, so send any additions, changes to Lynn and Mike and myself. Okay, thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Be real.
Bye-bye.